Sam, do we have the pledge of allegiance and the flag on the wall?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. The Verona Board of Education passed a resolution at its meeting held on December 12th, 2017. The meeting set forth the schedule of its regular meetings, which resolution was within seven days of passage. The schedule was sent to the Verona Cedar of Times, the Star-Ledger, the Herald News, the Township of Verona, and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted in each of Verona’s six schools, the board office, and town hall. This posting was also sent through the newspapers, all SCA presidents, and SCA liaisons. The Verona Board of Education operates under consent agenda format. Any board member has the right to have a item pulled to be voted upon or discussed separately. Copies of tonight’s agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public present. Mrs. Bernardino? Mr. Day?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mrs. Freski?
Here.
Mr. Quattrochi?
Here. Okay, welcome to our first meeting in March. This is our work session meeting, and with that we do have a presentation tonight from Ms. McNeil, Mr. Gallochek, and Ms. Marzano from HBW. But before we do that, do we have any public comments or question on any agenda item? Okay, we’re going to turn it over to Mr. Gallochek, Ms. McNeil. Mr. Gallochek and Ms. McNeil.
Thanks for having us. We brought with us tonight three of our extracurricular club members, and we found, kind of thought that they all exemplify the kinds of qualities we’d like to see in our students: kindness, charity, giving, and volunteerism. So, Mr. Gallochek, can I talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. McNeil. Thank you, Dr. Dicio, and the Board of Education. We did bring an army of students here, and they’re going to present. Some of them are nervous, so I assure them that they’re mom’s friends, and they’re going to do a great job. We do have three groups that we’ll be presenting tonight. The Dream Team, which has been in existence for a while with the support of EMAC. A new club to HBW this year is the Peer Leadership Group, which is, you know, in line with the VHS Peer Leadership Club. And also, an exciting new club, the Kind Club, which has taken form. It was sparked as a result of, they’ll talk to you about it when, I don’t want to steal their thunder, but sparked based on an assembly that we had in October. So, without further ado, I’m going to turn it over to the Dream Team and their advisors or their students.
Do you want them to face you?
No, so why don’t we do this? Are you speaking in my own time?
Yeah.
All right, so I want you to come around the screen. I’m going to try.
Is this way it’s on camera in the public? Can we zoom in?
It will cut people out. You want me to, I can zoom in, but it’s going to get everything else out?
Yeah, that’s fine.
Okay.
There’s a budget to watch you get. You guys can figure out what to do.
Dream Team stands for dreaming to reach out to each other and make a difference. We are supported by EMAC.
Throughout the year, we participate in an assortment of activities that help others in our community to do jobs.
We support our troops with letters and candy, ducomalidine diabetes, Red Ribbon Week, kidney research, Progeria anti-bullying campaigns, cards and letters to sick children in hospitals. Along with these, we also participate in team-building activities like the ropes course at the community center.
Last year, we made cranes for Ms. Clifford based on the story of Sudoku and a thousand paper cranes.
And this was, this was actually one of the cranes that you made last year. How many, how many cranes did you make last year? There were a lot, right? The goal was a thousand, and the students exceeded the goal of a thousand cranes. That’s awesome. Really wonderful job, girls, and to the whole team. Nice round of applause for them.
Thank you. Next, I’m going to introduce Ms. LaJoy. She’s one of our two advisors for the inaugural HBW Peer Leadership Club.
Hi, everyone. I can’t see the screen where I am, so is it okay that I stand there? I’m good standing here. Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming tonight. I am one of the peer leader advisors. This is our first year with this club at HBW, so we’re very excited. We have a few students that are here that are peer leaders, and they just want to introduce themselves, and then I’ll give you a little bit of information about the club.
Hi, my name is Ava Czene, I’m in eighth grade.
Hi, I’m Angelina Farrar, I’m in eighth grade as well.
Hi, I’m Emily Puma, and I’m seventh.
I’m Anaisa Woren.
Okay, so, again, we just started this year, but we’re really proud of the things that we’ve gotten done so far, and a lot of the things have actually, a lot of the ideas and our accomplishments have come from, directly from the students. Our mission statement: HBW School’s Peer Leadership Team presents an opportunity for students to use their experience to influence and support their peers in a positive way. We will work together to create and deliver motivational messages to fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students, emphasizing the importance of education and encouraging our fellow students to make good choices, treat each other with respect, and stay away from drugs and alcohol. So, some of the achievements that we have made this year: we helped to hang the “We Are Verona” acrostic poems around local businesses in Verona. We collected food for the Verona Fights Hunger Week in connection with the Junior Women’s Club of Verona. The seventh and eighth grader peer leaders also helped to facilitate our new “Mix It Up” lunch for fifth and sixth graders, where they sort of just went around and, again, facilitated the lunch, where students were given assigned seats, but we mixed them up so that they weren’t all sitting with their friends. So, it was quite a task for our seventh and eighth graders to help them feel comfortable and, again, to facilitate conversation. Just really quickly, Mrs. Thomas, also known as Ms. Rebelle, she’s our speech teacher at HB. She actually came in during one of our meetings, and she spoke to the kids about how to facilitate conversation. Kids hung up posters, no, I’m sorry, around the school, spreading positive messages. They collected and donated money to the victims of Hurricane Maria. We created a Valentine’s Day scavenger hunt for students of HB, where students had to find the message. Has anyone told you how awesome you are today? We identified daily obstacles for peers, that peer space, I’m sorry, as well as how to make the building a safe place for each other. And we created posters where, which were hung around the school to create awareness of these obstacles. We will also be a welcome committee to our fourth graders coming in to visit in May, as well as when they start in September. So, Carly Rena is an eighth grader who’s going to speak a little bit about the first bullet that’s on the screen right now. She wrote up something that she’d like to read to you.
Hello, my name is Carly Rena, and I’m an eighth grade peer leader at HBW. Recently, I partook in an activity where a few peer leaders, including myself, taught a lower-grade level advisory class about intimidation within the school and how to deal with bullets. The students were fine and watched a video where harassment and intimidation was a focus, and after, they had a discussion a week about why bullies might harm others. The class then came up with great ideas about how to eliminate this problem in our school, suggest, accept others for their differences, don’t exclude, don’t spread rumors, and so many more. Also, now the peer leaders greet students at the main doors of HBW twice a month to make the school a more welcoming place. Ultimately, this interactive activity truly was an enlightening experience. Personally, it was eye-opening to see things from a teacher’s perspective. As for the students in the advisory class, the intimidation felt from the presence of teachers vanished, because for them, the education lesson was more like having a conversation with the students.
I’m going to put it on the spot a little bit. The one, you shared a lot of really, really interesting things that you’re doing in your first year. Do I have any volunteers to just give me a little bit of a personal experience or some feedback about the “Mix It Up” lunches? Because when I heard about those this year, I really thought those were a really great idea. Where, for those of the people who are in the audience don’t know, the “Mix It Up” lunches to really get the students to be around students who they don’t normally sit with, and to have students really get to know other people. So, anybody want to share anything regarding what your take on whether it was running a group, or facilitating a dialogue, or just having conversations in lunch?
Well, sometimes, sometimes students don’t feel comfortable with other students that they don’t classify as their friends, so getting them together really helped them. And especially when we started the conversations. Personally, for me, I started with the conversation cards, but they didn’t need me after a couple of minutes, because they started getting very comfortable with each other.
Great, thank you for sharing. Thank you.
Next, I’d like to introduce Ms. Hanilak and Ms. Tarth. And we’re going to introduce the Kind Club to you, and this is a club that’s really, after my own heart, we organized an assembly in October, and it was really for girls, and it was about how girls can be very negative to one another. And this assembly really inspired some of our young ladies to start this club. So, go on up.
Hi, I’m Julia.
Hi, I’m Julia Nigales, and I’m in sixth grade.
Hi, I’m Julia Malaga, and I’m in seventh grade.
Hi, I’m Julia Alcazy, and I’m from sixth grade.
Hi, I’m Karen DeBarr, and I’m in sixth grade.
Hi, I’m Jacqueline Wallace, I’m from seventh grade.
Hi, I’m Mrs. Hanilak. I’m one of the co-advisors for HBW’s Kind Club. And I’m Ms. Tarth, and Danielle Kelly is also an advisor with us. So, like Mrs. McNeil was saying, we had an assembly in October, which was the Kind Campaign, and it just, it had such a positive message. The leaders of the Kind Campaign actually came to our school after they showed us a documentary about girl bullying and their experiences, and they toured the country and just got lots of information about why it happens and how to prevent it. After the assembly, which had such a huge impact on the students and the teachers and anyone who was a part of it, we felt like we couldn’t let that stop just at, just in one assembly, so we wanted to kind of continue that. And we’re so lucky that a bunch of students had the interest too, and they joined the club and kind of making it what it is, or just kind of each meeting we come up with new ideas and things to do. So, these are a few students on the screen who aren’t here tonight, but wanted to share their thoughts about the club and why they joined. And now we have a few students who will share their experiences and talk about the things we’ve done.
I joined the Kind Club because after I watched the Kind Campaign, I saw how like girls and girls can actually get upstairs and be bullied. And I never want to be bullied, I never want to get bullied, and I never want to see bullied in person. And I joined this club so I could stop bullying in the school and excite and help affect people.
I joined the Kind Club because after watching the Finding Kind movie, I was really inspired by Lauren and Molly, and I wanted to do more kind things around our school. I also loved helping with the Kind Club cookie sale. It made my day when I received kind cards, and I worked to write them to my best school.
So, we had a sale with the cookie, a compliment sale, where we sold cookies, and each person that bought a cookie would have to write a compliment to someone that we hung on our wall, the kind wall, and after a few days, we ended up having to move to a second wall because we had a lot of, lot of notes and...
So, we had an author visit, Erin Chatafelli. She came to our school, and she personally asked the Kind Club for lunch in the media center, and her books are based on kindness, and she really liked the way that we were helping her out around our school, and she wanted to talk to us about her experience. And when she was doing her presentation, she said that she was bullied because of her nationality, and I thought that was very sad, and so that’s what her books are based on, and it was, I really loved meeting with her, it was awesome.
Hi, I’m Jacqueline Wallace. So, on the slide, I’m going to be talking about the different images. So, for example, there’s an amazing book that recently came out and became a movie, which we plan on sharing. This movie to explore the differences. We may have to like explain how to no longer judge the differences and to teach the new path to explore our insecurities, insecurities, to teach like how to not make them insecurities. So, this wonderful movie is known as Wonder. We will be presenting this in our auditorium to share. While we also created the Kind Club shirts, we made them from a combination of many designs, and then finally got to our final shirt. Then our amazing teachers who run the club took our tiny ideas and turned them into reality. I would also like to say a big thanks to the VFE, also known as the Verona Foundation for Education Excellence. This foundation is where we got our grant to be able to start one of our many projects. In our school, another extraordinary project we plan on doing to improve the environment we have is decorating the girls’ bathroom with kind words and heartfelt words. So, to improve our confidence and self-esteem, it’s just supposed to be helpful when you have a bad day. And beforehand, I would like to say one quote I found. So, and yes, I have been through some terrible things. Yes, I have been broken and beat up and brought to nothing. Yes, the light in me has been put out, but even after a fire has been put out, it can always start again. Sometimes it takes a while, sometimes you need help, but even ashes can turn into the brightest fire you’ve ever seen. I thank you for your time, and yeah.
So, as you can see, we have some amazing students who are doing amazing things, so thank you, guys. And our selfless advisors, you know, they do great work, obviously. We’re all, it’s great to see so many of us, students, adults on the same page, wanting to promote kindness in different ways, and it’s almost as if it’s contagious. I, you know, they keep coming up with more ideas, and they want to buy us, and it’s hard to say no, because, you know, we have a student body and a staff that’s really committed to doing great things. So, if you want to add to that, but we thank you for your support, because ultimately we need it, and it’s important, so thank you.
I just want to say thank you for the parents that are here tonight supporting the kids, the kids who came out to speak to us, because a lot of what we do is, like Mr. Quattrochi said, there’s a budget up there, so we get a lot of dry stuff. So, to have our faculty, the teachers, the students come in and share like such positive things, thank you.
The thing, for those who haven’t been here for some of these student presentations that we did from time to time, we did get a phone call from one of the districts, it was Verona Cedar Grove Times, I’m not sure if they reached out to you. Just as a quick thing to note, as a board, we have no idea what you’re all going to talk about in a month. It’s meant to be as surprising for us as it is for anybody else. So, there’s no preconceived perception about whether it’s something that’s good or something that’s going to be better. It’s all about how the students are interacting, especially with the support and help of the great teachers and all of that, and programs that you guys start. So, you guys did a great job. Thank you for everybody, thank you to the parents. The world is only going to be a better place if the people that are in it try to make it a better place. And if we can have a little less tweeting, less Marxists in England, and no crazy person in Asia shooting off nuclear bombs, other than those three things, we’d be fine, right? So, thank you very much. Do you have some of the dry stuff that's...
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Thank you for the teachers for supporting our students, and for the parents as well. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Hard to follow up on wonderful student presentations, but I’m going to give it a go. And we’ll start off with some really good news. I did get a letter, and she does not know if I was going to talk about this in public, but I did get a letter today congratulating Mrs. Freski from New Jersey School Board Association. She had a confused look there, like, what’s this all about? So, Mrs. Freski’s been recognized by the New Jersey School Boards Association. She has earned sufficient credits under New Jersey School Board Association Board Member Academy Program. She is now certificated Board Member Award she’s received, and it recognizes the completion of training in critical areas of board governance. So, I’d just like to congratulate publicly Mrs. Freski for all of her hard work and dedication, and it’s an honor to have you on the board and for you to be continuing your education through New Jersey School Board. So, congratulations.
Thank you for recognizing that, and I don’t do it to get the certificate. It’s very helpful, the professional development that they give, because it’s a huge learning curve. Going into my fourth year on the board, there’s always something new, and it’s different. So, it just helps to get outside of our own community and just hear other input, so it’s well, 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 time well spent for me.
And those, and those of us who know Mrs. Freski and know her well, will often hear her coming back with what she’s learned, and she’ll share it with members of the board and myself and Mrs. Bernardino. So, she definitely takes it very seriously, so congratulations again.
Thank you.
And one other item that I have on the superintendent report is slightly connected to budget, but more or less connected to, you know, long-term, long-term goals that we have, primarily one that has been driven with the work from the Action Committees on Mental Health and Suicide Prevention and Code of Conduct and Respect. This is no secret to the board, to the people who are here in the audience this evening. The budgetary process becomes increasingly more and more difficult each and every year. That 2% cap, although understanding, trying to keep the inflation of costs as controlled as possible, really does make running a school district increasingly challenging, and really it’s an unsustainable model. So, in an effort to continue to look ahead and making sure that we’re supporting our students in our community, any new programs we’re really starting to take a look at as a Board of Education, doing the funding under a second question. There have been some things that have been brought up, some ideas regarding second questions. For one, we do have a large group of parents who are interested in exploring, and we’re doing some research on this on full-day kindergarten. Right now, we have extended day. But we’ve also had some conversations over the past year and a half around mental health, suicide prevention, code of conduct, and respect, and what are the next areas that we really need to go and support? And we just can’t fund some of these things through our regular budget process. So, we are working on looking at a second question, that we are going to be crafting that question, building it in and adding it in as a potential through the budget process, but only as a requirement with the County Department of Education, so that way we can craft a question for November of 2018. And the spirit of it is primarily going to be focused on making sure that we can create two full child study teams, one at the middle school, one at the high school. Just to give people context, the full child study team is a school psychologist, a social worker, and a learning disabilities teacher consultant, what we call an LDTC. The middle school right now only has two of those three members, so we need to add a full-time social worker there. And at the high school, we have a psychologist, that’s 60%, and we really need that psychologist to be full-time. So, that’s one component around supporting mental health, social, emotional, behavioral, so we can have a comprehensive support for our students with special needs. In addition to that, we are exploring partnering with outside groups that would be able to come in and provide support services for both general education and special education students, it’s open to all students that would be identified as being in need and would benefit from these sorts of mental health supports. And we’re looking at different programs that are out there right now, and looking to see what these sorts of programs would cost, and partnering up with one of these companies to come in. And we’re looking at several companies right now, and I’ve worked with one in particular in another district. So, there are several that are very reputable, and we’re just trying to take a look right now, exploring to see which group would be the best for Verona. So, we’re working on that, and there’s going to be more to come on that in the coming weeks. And that’s it for the superintendent report.
Any questions for Dr. Dicio? Can we do, would anybody mind if we did Finance Committee first? Can we do that? Let’s, actually, let’s do the easiest one first. Community Resources did not meet, so they have to wait six hours. The other committees met, right? Education, Special Education, the Athletics Met?
Yep.
And Building Department Met, right? Okay, so for Finance, as Dr. Dicio explained, so we have a budget by the time of the year, and just to explain to the public where we are with the budget, we need to submit a prelim budget to the state, and the current timeline has that due a week from tonight on March the 20th. The governor’s address that will release the state aid figures to us that go into the budget is not set to happen in Trenton until Thursday, two days from tonight. So, we’re not in a position tonight to vote on a budget, because we don’t know what the aid figure is, and we don’t know what we’d have to do to balance the budget, number one. Number two, as Dr. Dicio said, the budget continues to operate year over year in what we believe is a very unsustainable model in an unsustainable sense. And the reason why it’s unsustainable is because the state, a couple of years ago, imposed a 2% limit for boards of education to increase their spending year over year. For Verona, where we have a budget of some $34 million, $33, $34 million.
Can I just interject one second? You said 2% of spending?
2% of tax, sorry. 2% of tax levy that goes into the spending. For a district like Verona without socio-demographic ranking for the state, about 98.5, 99% of our budget comes from local property tax. That portion of the budget can only increase by 2%. If we were in some district with lesser means, take Patterson, for example, you might see that the state provides aid that represents about 65, 70% of their spending, so the property tax limit doesn’t impact them, because they get so much aid. This money's still always, you know, in the world of resources, money's always going to be tight. So with that, where the rubber hits the road on that is this, you know, we are a personnel-heavy organization, just like any school district would be. We don't produce spokes wagons, and we don't have raw materials that we use, we pay personnel. So on personnel costs, inclusive of the contractual salaries, salary increases in the contracts, healthcare and other benefits, you know, release time and vacation time and sick time and all that, when you add all that up, it comes out to about 8, close to 80% of the total budget. If you put in there on top of that, the things that are really not negotiable, like you must have property insurance, you must have liability insurance, you must have books, you must have electricity turned on, you must have heat, and all the rest of that, the budget quickly becomes difficult to navigate in about $0.98 a dollar in the budget. With the 2% property tax limit, it's important to recognize that we've gone through the last, I think it was three, maybe four, but definitely three, teacher contract negotiations where we called in a state mediator to help us navigate an agreement with the association on salaries. With the state mediator, it's a very dangerous game. For the board side, it's a win for us because it eliminates, it puts our sense of reality on the budget, we believe, to bring the salary ask that we sometimes see from the association a little bit lower. But it also is biased to paying salary increases to the association based on what county or state averages are for recent contracts. It does not take into account the finances of the district, it does not take into account anything else that we have going on, it does not take into account our strategic plan, it takes into account nothing other than the state average is 2.65%. We need to get to that number, let's agree on some concessions on both sides, so we can get you to 2.65. 2.65 is over 2% on salaries. Healthcare has been running close to 10% per year, maybe a little less this year, it's a little less than that, I think, right? Is that, you know?
I'm sorry, can you say that again? Healthcare, 7%?
7% this year. It's 7% on something close to a $6 million total premium, or? Four?
4 million is the premium.
Counting all, so I don't think it's six is all of the...
Oh, you're thinking of everything else, the curves payment, and, yeah.
All right, so say on a 4.5 million, $4.5 million insurance premium for healthcare, growing at 7%, that's going to eat away, even if you allocated 2% to every line item, that line item just took 7%. So it's going to take away from other line items, and then you've got to go down elsewhere to make up that money. When you give salary changes of more than 2%, you've got to go find that money someplace else. We did teachers, we did our professional contract, that money's going to come from someplace, and part of that contract included paid sick days, paid time off, et cetera, that's got to be paid for as well. So in a world of the 2% cap, it forces us, and we've talked about this over the course of the last year, maybe a little longer, as Dr. DiNicio said, to contemplate doing a second question, or maybe more than a second question. Second question is not a referendum. Second question is a budgetary, a budgetary question for the public on Election Day, so it would be in November, that says, "If you vote yes, then we will increase the permanent baseline of the budget by X amount of money," stipulated in the question, "ring-fenced for the uses of specifically what's in that question." A perfect example of this is Full Day Kindergarten. It comes up from time to time, we committed to a cohort of parents who feel very strongly about it, that we would put it out there as a second question. It'll have a dollar amount next to it, say, "If you vote yes for this, taxes will increase to the tune of this much money, after the average home will be discounted application, and if you said yes, then here's how we will implement Full Day Kindergarten. If you said no, then we cannot implement Full Day Kindergarten that year." Even if we figured out some other way to do it, we'd have to wait till a subsequent budget year to try it again. So we do need to explore that, and then the second thing that we can do are for regarding capital improvement. So where we have renovations, where we have maintenance over the years, and we've got the track at HP, we've got a wall and one locker room that needs repair, you know, you have to add that up, and that quickly runs into a million dollars of repairs, that at any one point in time would be terrific to knock this stuff out before things deteriorate further. Our, the one part of our budget that we've historically always said is the weakest in the budget is our money that we allocate to buildings and grounds, maintenance. We've done very well with renovation money, but year will be of maintenance, you know, we have a home with 2,250 students running through it 10 months at a year, you know, it gets beat up a bit. So we do have the opportunity to do a referendum question. That's technically a different question, that would be a question that allows us to go and issue debt and bond for it, and then again, think of capital improvement. So I've got budget increase for certain ring-fenced endeavors that we have as a district, and then I've got capital. Finally, neither one of these can be, neither one can have topics in it that have mandatory educational responsibilities. So for example, we cannot say, "We're thinking about doing away with math." Right, and just, that would say, you know, "Teachers K to 12 that teach math, you have to teach math." You can't have a second question that relates to that. So there's stipulations on what would qualify for a second question in order to get us out of this, this sort of, you know, this sort of spiral, like many other school districts are, right? So that's where we're at. So as of now, we are tentatively agreed to meet at 7 o'clock next Tuesday night for a very, very quick Board of Education, it'll be one resolution, yes or no on the budget, so that Ms. Nardino can't submit it. We don't expect that to be a contentious debate, it's just we have to have a public resolution before she can file it, but we're not going to be able to do that tonight. And then for the duration of this week and heading into Monday and Tuesday, the various committees will meet with Dr. DiNicio, Ms. Nardino, as needed, the rest of the administrative leaders, depending on the committee, to work out if there are any decisions that, you know, can go one way or the other for board to apply, you can do that there. Okay? All right, so that was Finance. Mrs. Freski, do you want to do Education Committee?
So since I didn't show up for the first half of it, do you want to take that half first?
So the first half is the Special Education...
I was now shy.
So, give it the merit against your NJ...
She took another class somewhere.
You missed a class, I'm sure.
Makes those guys feel better.
So, she's not perfect, oh my gosh.
Far, far from it, far, far from it.
So we met on Special Education last week, and it was, it was, it's in the board packets. Most of it was confidential, so we can't talk about it publicly. There were some particular student matters that were reflected in there. We did talk about interaction with the Child Organization, which continues to be strong. We've done some leadership changes there, so new faces that are becoming activated. And we also talked about our professionals and some of the requirements around staffing for the coming year.
I had this a lot, I don't feel badly. So for the second part of the meeting, it was rescheduled, and I did attend that. So that was the curriculum instruction and assessment portion from Mr. Miller. And that actually had a lot of first readings that we were going through, and they're all posted online. I think they all got uploaded, the policies that are going to be approved. So we, Mr. Miller ran through all the policies that were for approval. This is only the first reading of them, so everybody can look through, and...
The Strauss Esme?
Yeah, generally the Strauss Esme. The ones that stood out and that we talked a little more in depth about was around social media and board members' actual use of social media. And the other one that stood out was in regard to... Oh, you have them all, okay, yeah.
Their resolution of the...
So some of them were just very, very standard military. The other one that had a little conversation about it was in regard to high school transcripts. And what that one basically says is somebody's discipline record does not follow them automatically on a transcript up to college. And if there were anything, a parent would have to include it in my transcript.
Which is already practiced.
It's practiced, yeah.
Was never tried.
Yeah, so it was just number in here. Then they had to do, they were standard ones, like Mr. Day said, they come from the Strauss Esme, so they're pretty much standard within the state following compliance, and it was lead testing of water at schools, pertaining, another one pertaining to school district security, and the bus driver, bus aid responsibility, and use of electronic signatures. So this is the first reading, they're all uploaded, if anybody feels compelled to go and read them.
Can I ask a question? I actually have one, one that just made, I think, not a lot of sense to me. And that was regarding, and I know a lot of us, we just pass it, okay, these are updates, or these are, they don't really matter. But still, when something doesn't make sense, I kind of like to just pull it out. And that's regarding the student tracking devices, and the meat of the matter is to protect the privacy rights of all students, and maintain the school's district's legal obligation, and maintain confidential student information in accordance with federal state law regulations, use of a tracking device for application on an electronic device that enables any type of one-way, two-way audio and/or video communications or taping is not permitted. That basically means you can't, students can't sell them.
They can't record in classes, was that what, the gist of that was?
I believe so, I'm calling it up.
It's the fact that, you know, all of these have GPS with them, right?
Yeah, so it's a time one.
For example, every student uses Snapchat, and they all have SnapApp, which they locate you in, you know, real time. So in theory, they don't use someone, which seems kind of ridiculous on the basis of...
I'll have to take a closer look at it, I'm trying to pull it apart.
Yeah, because what I bet, and I interpreted it more that we know everybody has...
Functionality in the cellphone.
Has cell phones, and they all have tracking, but that you're, you can't use it...
Well, it says to use a tracking device or an application, so an application would be any, really, a social media application.
Yeah, I guess I didn't, I didn't interpret that much.
We probably do that a little self, or each other.
Like, no, like, in the end, we just...
Yeah, I mean, it's a good point, because I write it differently. So go back. So, yep, I'm going to make a mark of that.
Well, I just found it here, I'll take a closer look at it, and I'll report back to the board.
That's fine.
If you get a little clarification, I'll stick with Mr. Miller about it.
It's rather vague, like, like you said, almost, to me, the way it's written, it's like if you're using a notepad in a school, like, you're by election, because it does, I remember that, so I'm going to check location, and also obviously it records audio and video.
But at the bottom here, I'm just looking at more of the things here, it says that any device or application or electronic device, right, that enables any type of one-way or two-way audio and/or video communication or taping is not permitted. So it's the actual act of taping or recording without permission.
I think that's the intent, I guess I don't...
Yeah, that's what I interpreted it, so, yeah. You're drilling it down like a little more specific.
It's not the sheer fact that if you have such a device on you that is capable of recording, that that would be, that would not be permitted.
Right.
It's the actual recording.
It says, yeah. But it doesn't, it's the use of a tracking device and application on, so use, what, it's, you know, getting probably a little bit, it just seems rather vague.
So are we able to, because this is, I was going to say, so we could tweak that, change the language to make it less ambiguous and clear, if we wanted to.
We could, we should take advisement from Strauss Esme, because they have attorneys on retainer there, and that they're the ones who craft this, because it's all crafted around statute, and they're intended to protect the district. So we just have to be careful, maybe run it through our attorney as well, so that way when we do modify that, we're not really changing the spirit of what the board policies are.
Before I want to, if I get clarity.
Yeah.
The Strauss Esme could just clarify for us.
Yes.
Yep.
So we, is there any, any of these policies emergent, like we need to do a first reading tonight, or can we defer to the next meeting?
They're not official board policies tonight anyway, it's just a first reading. They're not official board policies until they become a second reading, which is the next meeting. So we could technically still do an improvement as a first reading tonight, unless somebody feels so strongly that you want to say no to one of them, and, but it doesn't become official until the next one.
What the, because one of the things that the policy is not clear on is who's not allowed. Because it says, it starts off with the preamble, it says, "We recognize that students have devices that do this." Okay, and then it says, "But you're not allowed to..."
Right. It's, to me, I was, like, we, yeah, we know we have students that, right, students have these devices, like, then it ends almost in mind repetition, and they can't use these devices, because they...
Yeah, my understanding is what it's trying to say is you cannot use tracking devices and publicize to others what it's doing. So if your child is a student here and had a phone, and it's in her pocket, you could track that your student is sitting in the school. That's your parents, right? If you read that as crisply as it's written, it says you're not allowed to do that.
Right.
Which is, can't be allowed. So I believe, and then there's other parts of it that, what looks to me like what it's trying to say is the school will not publicize the location of students. That's what, that's what I think the spirit is, what it's trying to get at, it doesn't say that though. It makes it seem like you're not allowed to have iPhones.
Right, that's how, that's exactly right. And the only other one I had a question on too was the, because it's rather broad, and I know, I think this is just an update or existing policy, but regarding social media used by Board of Education members. And number six is not responding to any questions regarding Board of Education or school business, or responding to any question, or inquiry post to a board member or post to any social network, it just goes on. For example, so just this evening, you know, someone had a question on a social network about the student demonstration platform, and they clarified, and I said, "No." But I feel like if they're reading this policy, that would almost be a violation of it, because they responded to it, to afford, is that for business?
It is, so...
So that, I'm concerned by that as well. So, but, you know, technically that would be a violation of this policy, but just by the act of being responding, saying, "No, we actually have..." Look, I looked at it again, like, no, I felt very comfortable with what I posted. And I reposted Mr. Prado's letter, who a lot of people hadn't seen yet, regarding the event that he had sent out. But, you know, I'm not comfortable with that one as well. Because I think we've all, a lot of us who are more active than others on social media, have used this, have used social media to communicate regarding board events and activities.
So what it says there is, if there's a question around official Board of Education business, that a board member shouldn't really speak to it. So referring to the superintendent, right?
Right, so what, right, so what's...
So the question is, how does that thing define what business is? The second thing is somewhere else in there, it does try to make a distinction between responding to an email that somebody may send you versus posting something on a social media platform that can go where knows where, right? It tries to make that distinction. So I think we, my personal view is, the military service ones are fine, these other ones are sort of fraught with danger.
I think so.
So, so we can do a first reading tonight, if that's the consensus, but I would recommend that you read through these, and then we table, quote, the ones that seem to cause more grief, anxiety, and stress than what they're meant to say.
Yeah, and I understand the intent, but once again, that my, you know, when you have this policy, and it'd be, that's true for me, and like, you respond, and it's just a very accurate, truthful way to do it, rather than just post, just to clarify an issue, and also, "Oh, you're, you're mine, I'll give you more votes."
Well, again, it talks, it's a little bit ambiguous when I read this one, because although it, it's, it tries to make clear what it means by social media, it doesn't use any of the marketed names, it doesn't say Facebook, it doesn't say Twitter. It describes what they are. If you read, when you read the description of what they are, you say, hm, a text message and an email fits that description. Right, because I could respond to an email, and then it could get forwarded by whoever I sent it to, to all kinds of people. They could post it online. So the thing says, if you respond to somebody in such a way that they can take what you said and forward it on or make it visible publicly, then you're not allowed to do that.
And it makes almost like, no, we can't communicate with anybody.
Well, you can't use, you can't leave a voicemail or something, because that could be forwarded to someone. So I think, I think what it's trying to say could be better said, and may already be an... So I think, I think what it's trying to say could be better said and may already be in our policies about the appropriateness of what a board member should or should not be saying publicly.
I just think this gets pretty granular, too specific.
It's very, too, it gets too granular. Right? And again, it's so granular that it tries to describe what the platforms might be. And when they describe their platforms, it's like, that's basically voicemail, email and text messages as well.
As well as other social media.
Right, so at that point, you know, if you read that, when you read that, it's like, hmm, that means I'm not allowed to have a Board of Education email either. Right? That would be so.
Alright. Kind of goes by issues. Thank you.
So do you want to table those two for tonight and do the first reading on the other ones? And I'll get clarification from you.
I think what we should do, to be honest with you, I think we should table a whole resolution for tonight. That's my personal view.
Yeah.
They're all in the, in the doc, you know, in the drive, so you can read them. And then why don't you send, if you guys could send me which of the ones you think we should just scrap? I, I, what I wouldn't want, my personally what I want to do is try to fix a three-page policy that says I'm not allowed to communicate with people, right? And try to make it in a way that I can communicate, except it, right?
You have the policy around it.
And I think, right, so the thing that it says there too is like, you're not allowed to post things that's undecoming of a board member. Well, that's already understood. That's not, I don't need a additional policy to that. So my personal view is that in some ways we should probably do that. But take a look at all of them and then next meeting we can, we could just do a nice clean first reading, second reading resolution with the list of just the policies in that.
Great.
Okay?
Yeah.
And then lastly, on the education, we're adding two delayed openings on May 30th and 31st to do a pilot science test. And the other question that I had put out to Mr. Miller that wasn't on the agenda was in regard to the standard-based report cards. So about four years ago, our elementary school report cards were modified and reviewed and changed to be standard-based. And what Mr. Miller was explaining is that that's part of the goal is to carry that standard-based report card and evaluation system for students up through the middle school. So he just spoke a little bit about that and was hoping to have that as a goal on the strategic plan. And that's it.
A person.
That would be me as well. So athletics committee, that was pretty straightforward. The winter sports are all wrapped up and finished. Our girls' basketball team had a great season and they did get knocked out at the very end. We had a wrestler, Frank Gabriel, who made it to the state tournament. And we have the update on the lacrosse agreement. That was pretty standard, just come forward that we signed. So that's just moving on with that. And then all the spring sports began and our girls' softball team is down in Florida for spring training. And we had one more policy update on the overnight trip forms for the high school, for medical forms. And what Mr. Merkler is trying to do is get them uniform, unified and consistent because each form, everybody had a different form. So he kind of consolidated all the questions to make sure everything's getting captured. And what will be different now is that it has to be signed and notarized. And what my question was to him is how, are we going to look down at HB as well? Because it seems that it should kind of be consistent throughout the district. So he's going to look at the HB medical consent overnight forms as well. And we're going to just try and unify everything to keep it simple.
Should have a form.
Yes. Keep it thing. So that's what we're working towards. And then lastly is field trip for the Euro Challenge. Students are going to be gone to the Federal Reserve Bank on April 26th.
That's a great one.
Yeah, I, I witnessed that.
In the last year.
Yeah, it's great. It's great.
Building grounds?
I'll take it. So that's.
You guys.
Thank you.
Regarding building and grounds, we talked about various things going on. One of the things, you know, as you know, it's winter, so a lot of things we can't do right now. But, so there's some spring projects that we're working on. One of them is the restaurant.
Shove snow.
Shove snow, yeah. We're doing that. We have a little, little bit of, there's a bit of snow there. Um, restroom, restroom in the lower field, we'll start working on that in the spring. I know there's a lot of things we had talked about potentially doing, sanding and grow area, you know, putting some trees up, things like that, but again, depending on the budget. Then we'll, when we start with those things. The FM, FM Brown, new water heater, we installed in-house, we'll be taking care of that. There was a roof leak at HBW that was, we found resolved. But as you know, that's something we've been talking about in our maintenance plan. But I'm sure about roofs and various buildings and how we can make sure that those are maintained and taken care of or replaced as needed. Could be a possible second question.
It's a, it's the next, it's going to be a, the next referendum. It's going to most likely be roofs, windows, the track at HBW, the, the exterior wall at the HBW locker room. Those are, those are four major ones as part of the next referendum amongst a smattering of other things.
We talked about door locks being repaired in various classrooms. Regarding snow removal, I want to do a shout out to our, our crew for, from the maintenance staff and what they did to take care of the schools during this crazy Easter season. And also back to town for all their abilities to help us through the storm, through the plowing and shoveling and so on and so forth. And Mr. Miller will take care of all the cost and financing. So, so, sorry, get the mic, we should, I get it for that.
Public Works was great and also the Borough Police Department was fantastic as always, but especially lately with all the trees down, the wires down, and just making sure that the town was safe for people. So that, as always, they did a great job in helping support us and getting our schools back up and running.
I know with duck calling, it was like maybe one day and then maybe day and a half long. Next, you know, three days because of the trees and the wires and everything else. So, you know, the, the town and the schools are doing whatever we could to get the schools back up and running. I know we lost power at school too.
Yes. HBW and VHS lost power. Fortunately at VHS, we have that generator, which was part of the last referendum. So that came in really handy because it did not destroy our network and we were able to continue to communicate and do all of the things that we needed to do. And the transition back up once we got the power on was a lot easier, so.
How long does that work, just to be clear?
The power outage? Just a few hours. I think it's less than 12 hours if I swarm HB.
And again, this week we'll be looking at the maintenance, looking down at budget and seeing what we can create for modified budget for that and how that could be changed.
I'll also piggyback off the snowstorm conversation. I could send the email out, that's part of our district calendar, went out to the whole community today regarding adding a day back to the April break. So April 6th, which was the last day prior to, a few hours ago, of the spring break, is now going to be a full school day in order to make sure that we meet the 180-day minimum. I waited until today to send that because I was keeping my fingers crossed that we weren't going to lose today as a snow day because they were obviously calling for some more snow. Hopefully we're, hopefully we're through it.
You have a storm next, it's forecast.
So I hear, so we keep our fingers crossed. But that is typical. That's what we agree upon with the committee and with the board, that we will take away or add days to the end of the break. So we, we start with the last day of the spring break and then we work our way backwards. We build in three snow days into every school calendar and we complete our calendars two years ahead. So that way families can always plan accordingly for recesses and holidays in their vacation plans.
So if, so that Friday becomes a full day, do, as a district, do you need a certain percentage of student attendance for it to count?
You do not.
Okay.
You do not.
Do we anticipate any staff issues?
Um, I did communicate with staff just to have a sense of what we're, I have heard back from a number of staff. We will have some staff that will not be here, but it's not something that, based on the number that I have so far, that seems extraordinary anymore than maybe a high day, any other day of the year. So we, we've certainly had other days that have exceeded the number of absences that we anticipate on April 6th. So we feel confident that we can handle it.
Building down report is completed. Any questions? I don't think we have any discussion either tonight other than we talked about finance and the meaning of sleek to the committee of these we carried out this week.
Right, and I'll just confirm that with everybody out there who's saying when we get the series figures and, and upload the data. And others, you know, like, you know, to, I'm going to say a lot.
By film, I'm just, help us out. The crowd's laughing, isn't that good?
The crowd, too.
Fifty percent of the crowd's laughing.
Come on, come on. You, you guys have an extra, make up the poll call first. Okay, our resolutions.
Resolve that the board approve resolution one and two and table resolution three.
So.
Second. Moved by Ms. Elliot, seconded by Mr. Day. Any questions? Good call.
Mr. Day?
Aye.
Ms. Elliot?
Aye.
Mrs. Fresco? Aye. Mr. Quasrich?
Aye. Okay, I'm going to wrap up this next meeting. Any public comment or question? Okay, so we're going to recess tonight. We have our next meeting tentatively scheduled for a week from tonight on March the 20th. If that doesn't happen, Ms. Nardino will advertise that. That will only be to do the resolution, to submit a form of the budget. If not, our next meeting is on the schedule for March 20th. Six o'clock confidential, seven o'clock group session. Goodnight.